This is the regular village board meeting for the village of Glencoe on Thursday, April 21st, 2022. The first item is calling a meeting to order, which I'm doing now in a roll call. Before I, we do the roll, um, when we call, we'll see that trustee listener is not available. She's out of town. Trustee Mulvaney is not here. He's out sick, but he is going to participate by phone as long as everybody agrees to that. Are there any objections to that? Not hearing any. Uh, that's how we're going to proceed. Uh, village manager Crowley, could you do the roll call, please?
Certainly. Trustee Hallwax.
Here.
Trustee Listener. Trustee Mulvaney.
Here.
Trustee Onderdunk.
Here.
Trustee Rubin.
Here.
Trustee Vrie.
Here. We have a quorum. We are live streaming this meeting and have posted the links to that live stream on the village's social media pages. We'll make the recording available on the village's YouTube, YouTube channel following the conclusion of tonight's meeting. As we're again meeting in person, I would remind anyone that's present this evening that masks are recommended, although I know most of us on the board aren't wearing them, probably should be. Um, but they're recommended and we have extra masks available at the back of the council chamber for your use. The second item of the agenda is consideration of minutes. Um, the minutes, the minutes have been circulated and posted online. They're the minutes for March 17th, 2022, the committee of the whole meeting and the board of trustees' regular meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? And if not, if, if there are any comments, please speak up. I don't see any comments. Is there a motion to approve?
So, okay.
Okay. Mr. Village Manager Crowley, could you do a roll call, please?
You can do a voice vote on this.
Oh, voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Um, do I need to ask for nays? Do I need to ask for nays?
Not if you make a determination that the ayes have it.
They have it. Okay. Third item on the agenda is public comment. This portion of the meeting allows for those in attendance to address the board regarding non-agenda items. I'll request that public comments that relate to agenda items be made when we, when we reach that item on the agenda. And all comments should be limited to three minutes and I'll notify the speaker when the three minutes are up. Anybody have any comments on non-agenda items? I don't see any. That takes us to the fourth item on the agenda. Fourth item on the agenda is a report of committees. And the first committee is the committee of the whole. We just met earlier this evening and uh, my report is that we talked, uh, that we got presentations at length on two issues. The first was on the process to do a comprehensive plan. Uh, the last one we had was in 1996 and it's time for a new one. The second discussion was a continued discussion of updates on the sign code to address changes in First Amendment law and other areas where village staff and others had noted potential problems. That was what we discussed at the committee of the whole. The next report is the finance committee. Trustee Vrie.
Uh, thank you. Uh, we had our meeting on Tuesday. Uh, it was a relatively short meeting, um, but we went through our normal agenda where we discussed the finances of the village. Um, we were through the first quarter of the year and as we've seen over the last several quarters, um, village finances are in very good shape. Uh, revenues are coming in ahead of expectations, um, with strength really across the board, but a lot of, um, the tax revenue is stronger than, than we might have expected. Um, places for heating taxes is well above what we expected. Um, so from our perspective right now, as of the first three months of the year, we're in, we're in very good shape. Um, we also went through our community improvement projects, um, that are upcoming. And then the one thing we did highlight, um, was the potential for the second installment of our property taxes, uh, to be delayed, uh, potentially into, at worst case, potentially into 2023. Um, and now that will mean none of us will have to pay our property tax bills until later in the year, but, um, it's a substantial piece of the budget for the village. And so we are discussing ways of just managing through the potential delay of the revenue. And that was our meeting.
Thank you, except for the last part. Um, the next item is a report on the plan commission that would normally be done by trustee listener who's not here, so I'll ask the village manager to take that.
Certainly. Uh, there was no plan commission meeting last month. However, there is one scheduled for next week, April 27th at 7:00 PM. Uh, there will be a public meeting, uh, discussing the preliminary review of a two lot subdivision uh, at 538 Green Bay Road and the information is available on the village's website. That will be a virtual meeting. Um, it was originally, uh, scheduled as in-person, uh, but that was, uh, that was amended, uh, a couple of weeks ago, so it will be available on Zoom.
Thank you. Um, the next report is the golf advisory committee, trustee Hallwax.
So the golf advisory committee met on Monday and, uh, we, the golf course opened, uh, on March 16th. We were ahead of a lot of other golf courses thanks to the work that staff did to get the, uh, the course ready. So the last 10 days of the month had, had quite a lot of rain and that affected, uh, our ability to be open. Um, we still don't have carts operating because of, of the wet weather. Yeah, some good news. Kevin McCann, he's an associate PGA member, was brought on as an independent contractor for the academy. He's going to teach the junior summer camps and individual private lessons. If you remember, we have struggled to fill this position just because there's just, uh, just a dearth of, of instructors out there. So we're thrilled to have someone on now because there's a lot of demand for lessons. The friends of the golf, Glencoe Golf Club met last week and we've got three new members, which is fantastic. Three members that are, um, you know, regular players, but also people that are involved in the community and can hopefully continue to help us fundraise for, uh, for our, um, with, with the new, with the new fundraiser Pam. So he was our campaign director, but, um, we're thrilled to have three new members. And also, um, one, our, our academy instructor, Bill Sakes, he's in, uh, receiving an award tonight, which is where Stella is, and it's the PGA Deacon Palmer Award. And this is presented to PGA instructors that display outstanding integrity, character and leadership and in an effort to overcome a major obstacle in their life. So we want to congratulate Bill.
Thank you. Um, okay. Next report is the sustainability task force. Uh, trustee Mulvaney, you're up.
Thank you. Um, as usual, the task force is working hard to make Glencoe the most sustainable and desirable community in the universe. The, today we're going to hear from our chair, Barney Gallagher, who's going to give us updates, so I will try to be brief. A few things I want to highlight. Of course, we are in April, Earth Month and Earth Day. And people often want to know how to get involved and the task force is creating a few opportunities to do just that, uh, locally here in Glencoe. We're organizing cleanup days, uh, I think that's this weekend. And, um, including the beach and the, and the park, uh, the, the Green Bay Trail. As well as our recycle and donate day, which is coming up in the middle of May. It's two very good opportunity for people to participate in this, uh, critical issue of sustainability and creating, making Glencoe, as I said, the most desirable and sustainable community. Uh, another topic which I'd like to bring up and I'm remiss for not driving this in the, um, meeting on the whole is the, a suggestion that both our inclusion and diversity task force, as well as our sustainability task force have more, um, meaningful or formal seats in planning RASA. I think the idea is that they would be consulted. Um, and I'm, I'm simply suggesting that perhaps we can find ways to, uh, increase that engagement, uh, from those two task force. It meets multiple goals, not the least of which is an ongoing discussion about helping our task force work together. Um, that is my report for the moment. I just want to put that on the table. Maybe we can take a moment to discuss if people can ask questions. Um, and, and I'll leave it up to our, our chairman, Barney Gallagher, when it's his slot on the agenda. Thank you.
Uh, thanks, uh, for that report and, uh, for the suggestion. I, you know, they, I don't, just, do the trustees want to talk about this now? I, um, I don't think we have to figure it out at this point and I'd sort of like to... So clearly we want to be thinking about sustainability and inclusion in our plan. Um, uh, we certainly should be hearing from those committees. Um, and to me, the question is, okay, what's the best way to do that? Um, at some point we'll get so many people on the boat, it will sink, so we need to have a manageable committee in the plant, and the plan, um, commission has, uh, sort of members from all these agencies in the village and I, like, so I'm not, Pete, uh, is right that we need the advice. I'm, I'm not sure that I could say how we should do it. Anybody want to talk about that now or we could think about it and, um, you know, probably we should hear from the plan commission on what they think would work. Okay. Um, the next report is on the council for inclusion in community and trustee Rubin.
Uh, our, uh, the council meets the first Wednesday of the month and we met on the 6th of April. Uh, we continue to have some fairly extensive discussions, uh, principally on two topics. One is, uh, what we want the goals of the council to be for the upcoming year, for this year, um, and how we want to, uh, effectuate and succeed in those goals. And the second, which might be a subset of that is, you know, we've certainly decided that we need more community outreach and more engagement with the community. And we are working amongst ourselves and with others to try to figure out ways, uh, to achieve that so that the council, um, can be more of a, a place where people come to us is not just we going out to the community with various and sundry things, but people in the community coming to us with topics that, uh, people want to discuss and engage with the community about. Um, that's that. And by the way, one of the things we did talk about was, um, and Sharon was kind enough to follow up with some emails and we're still working on that, but, uh, specifically, uh, that our committee and, and, uh, trustee Mulvaney's committee, uh, to, to speak with each other and, and engage with each other, uh, because there is a, uh, areas of overlap and that it would be even more effective if, if we spoke with each other about that.
Thank you. Okay. The next report is the historic preservation commission, trustee Onderdunk.
Yes. Uh, the historic preservation commission met on April 5th. Um, we met virtually. Uh, the commission continued, uh, our discussion of potential code changes as a follow-up to the January 20th meeting presentation to the committee of the whole. Um, Chair Van Vecchion shared sentiments from his one-on-one conversations with various trustees about the options, uh, proposed, uh, and proposed changes, as well as new research he conducted on zoning bonuses for landmark properties. The commission will continue their discussions in May. Um, uh, we also reviewed the following demolition applications and determined that no action would be taken, uh, on that at this time. That's 361 Adams, 1025 Forest, which happens to be a historically significant property, but in really bad shape, and 922 Glencoe Drive, as well as 570 Westwood Lane. The next meeting will be on Tuesday, May 3rd, and I want to thank the council members for meeting with the chair of the commission, uh, and talking about the various recommendations that the commission has made. Um, hopefully we can come back to you with a, um, a list, a prioritized list of things that can be done right away and some things that can be done over time. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Okay. Um, the next item on the agenda is the reports of officers and the first report is from the village manager.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good evening, everyone. Uh, I want to start off, um, on a, on a really positive note and, um, welcome and introduce John Pape, who is our new assistant to the village manager. You'll be hearing from him a little bit later this evening as he presents on one of the items, uh, on our agenda. Um, but John has certainly hit the ground running in his first few weeks with us. Uh, he comes to the village from the village of River Forest, where he started his career in local government and has spent approximately the last six years. He's got a really long list of skills and accomplishments, uh, that he's bringing with him that we look forward to benefiting from here in Glencoe. I will say, um, one of those things is that he graduated from one of the finest schools in the Midwest, um, and I'm only saying that because I also graduated from Augustana College in Rock Island, um, but it's nice to have another Viking among us. Uh, John is going to be, uh, working among other things, uh, as a member of our business services team. He is serving as the staff liaison to the historic preservation commission and is going to be assigned to a variety of special projects throughout the village organization. Um, again, I'm just really pleased that he's part of our team. You're all going to get to know him a lot better, uh, over the coming weeks and months and years, uh, but welcome, John, and we look forward to all that you're going to do for our community. Um, a few updates for everyone, uh, that I just want to run through relatively quickly. We talked about it at length last month, but the village's two new electric car charging stations, uh, were activated the first week of April. And, uh, more and more of our community is becoming aware that they're available. We are doing our best to get information out. Uh, they have been signed appropriately and hopefully, um, we've seen actually some, quite a bit of use in those first few weeks. Uh, charging is limited to two hours during the day. Uh, we do accommodate it overnight for, uh, some of our downtown residents, um, and they are available on the ChargePoint network. So anybody who utilizes the ChargePoint network and their app will be able to find those, um, electric car charging stations. So it's nice to see those in operation, our first public ones, uh, in the village of Glencoe. And thanks to ComEd for, um, the grant that underwrote a significant portion of the, the cost of installing, uh, those stations. Uh, everybody should have gotten their vehicle licenses, um, purchased already, but if you haven't, the deadline is coming up. It's next week, May 1st. Uh, renewals received after that date will incur a $50 late charge. Uh, it is possible and encouraged to update your information and purchase those vehicle licenses online, but if you are one of those folks that really wants to buy them in person, we're going to be opening the village hall a little bit earlier next week, starting at 8:00 AM, to accommodate those, uh, who, who do stop in in person to purchase those licenses. So, uh, please, uh, please do get those in. We never like having to, uh, charge those $50 late fees and I'll tell you, neither do the people who have to pay them. So, uh, please do, uh, get that done before May 1st. Construction season in Glencoe is underway. Uh, this week, our asphalt street resurfacing program kicked off and tonight the board is being asked to consider approval of contracts for sidewalk reconstruction and stormwater improvements. It's going to be a busy season this year as these and other projects get underway throughout the community. Uh, really encourage folks to visit, um, our very comprehensive website on our construction projects this year. It's villageofglencoe.org backslash CIP. Um, visit that regularly for up-to-date information on our projects. Um, you can also find a link there to sign up for construction-specific emails or to sign up for our e-newsletter, which comes out every Friday. We are posting a lot of information on social media, um, with respect to updates and also keep an eye out for construction signage that we're going to be installing in all of our construction zones this summer with QR codes that bring you to the webpage that I just mentioned before, which allows you to get more information on what's going on. Do pardon our dust. Thank you for your continued patience and understanding as we get through what will be a very, uh, busy construction season, but an exciting one. Uh, I wanted to just give a brief update on, uh, the leaf blower working group. Um, the board will recall, um, the sustainability task force, um, had done a lot of work last fall on putting together a really great, comprehensive report that led to some really good communication and conversations among myself and my counterparts. Uh, what that has resulted in is a intergovernmental working group that consists of 11 municipalities, uh, landscaping industry experts and representatives from various special districts, which are all working together to develop a resource guide for communities to use when considering how to regulate, uh, gasoline-powered leaf blowers. Uh, we've met several times. Uh, I am serving on that, uh, on Glencoe's behalf, along with Hall Healy, who's a member of the sustainability task force. And along with my counterparts from Willmet and Highland Park, we are co-chairing the working group. Uh, we began meeting in January. We met again as a large group in April and that large group has been broken up into three working subcommittees that are currently compiling information that's going to be shared with all partners. Uh, and I expect that our work is probably going to be done this summer. Uh, so we will be, uh, assembling all of that and sharing that very comprehensive document with all 11 communities. Uh, it's been really, really an exciting opportunity to talk through this stuff and to, um, see the thought process, uh, working among all of these communities as we, uh, as we focus on this issue. All of the information of the work of the working group is available on the city of Highland Park's website. It's a very long web address. It's up there. We're going to share that in e-news this week as well, um, so that folks who want to kind of follow along with what's going on are able to do so. But Highland Park volunteered to assemble all of that information in one place. Um, and last but not least, trustee Mulvaney did mention a couple of, uh, upcoming events. First of all, Earth Day is tomorrow. Uh, thanks to the sustainability task force and the Park District and some of our other grassroots organizations, there's some really great community-wide cleanup events taking place on Saturday. The Park District has a webpage that, um, allows volunteers to sign up for some of those events. That's glencoparkdistrict.com backslash Earth-dash-day. We will push that information out tomorrow as well. Uh, it looks like Saturday is going to be a great day for working outside, so hopefully we have wonderful turnout. Uh, Arbor Day is next Friday, April 29th, as has been a longstanding tradition here in the community. Uh, the village is going to plant a tree in honor of Arbor Day at one of our schools. This year, we'll be at West School and the ceremony begins at 1:10 PM, um, which is, I'm sure revolving around the school schedule, but, um, please feel free to stop by. Uh, the public is invited to that event and we'll be taking some pictures and sharing those as well. Uh, fourth annual donate and recycle drop-up event, as trustee Mulvaney referred to, uh, is Saturday, May 14th, from 10 to 1:00, and the Metro Southeast commuter parking lot. And the following week is our, uh, annual spring cleanup day on Saturday, May 21st. Don't throw your stuff out. Donate it the week before. We've also got donation, um, uh, resources on the village's website and we will be pushing that information out as well. We want to make sure that things don't end up in the landfill if they don't need to be there. Uh, last but not least, next month, uh, I'll outline some of our summer events that are planned in the community. There's a lot, uh, planned for, for the summer of 2022. We're excited about it and more information to come. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
I don't see any questions. Thank you, village, village manager Crowley. Okay. The next, uh, item on the agenda is the village president's report. That's me. Uh, and the first item is consideration of a proclamation declaring May 2022 is Mental Health Awareness Month in the village of Glencoe. The proclamation has been, um, circulated, it's posted, uh, online, and if there aren't any questions, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
So, is that a vote?
They're second.
Second.
Um, and...
Steve, can we do a voice vote on this?
Yes, you can.
Uh, let's have a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone want to say no? The ayes have it. The motion carries. Uh, the next item is a review and discussion of the sustainability task force's 2021 annual report, and I will ask the task force's chair, Barney Gallagher, to present the annual report. Mr. Gallagher, thank you for being here.
Thank you, President Roy, and trustees. Appreciate your time tonight. I, you all have the report in your packet, so I'm not going to belabor a lot of points. Try and go over things fairly briefly and feel free to interrupt with questions at any time. Um, so first, can you hit the next slide? First, uh, in terms of the, oh, I forgot to mention, last time I did this was about a year ago and you were talking about signs then. I'm glad to see you're making some progress. Anyway, some of the members, we have, there are 14 members and then we have also some, we have a, uh, we, this year we established a, a new classification of volunteers. These are people who are not formally, you know, members of the task force in that they have not been approved by the board of trustees, but they are full, they work for all the, the various teams and, you know, for the, the, the task force. They attend our meetings, they have full voice privileges, they just can't vote. Uh, and so they become a very important part of our task force. Then, uh, as I will allude to in my next slide, we have 10 new members as a result of a survey, survey we did this year, but we had three peo, three of our members who showed, uh, came to join me tonight. Uh, Jennifer Varela, Jennifer, you want to say hi? She's been with the task force for...
About three years.
Three years. All right. She is in our...
Sure. So I'm Jen Varela. I've been on the committee over three years now. Um, have been thrilled to see such great things happen with this in just that short amount of time. Barney's been doing an amazing job. Um, I lead the public awareness committee, so we, with Tina and a few other members and volunteers, are really all about not only getting out the word that we have a task force, but also how do we implement change in behavior to actually make this a more sustainable community, both for the, the municipality as well as its residents. Uh, so I'm Jen. Thanks for having us tonight.
Thank you.
And then also we have Catherine, Catherine Bukowski. Catherine is our student member, soon to be joined by four new students. She started with the task force when she was in the seventh grade and she is now a rising junior. So...
Thank you, Barney. So I am indeed a student representative. I am in 10th grade right now, so my sophomore year of high school, at New Trier High School. And I am thrilled to represent all of my peers who are currently living in Glencoe. And I strive to make sure that the sustainability task force encompasses the ideas of all people, including students, and not just adults. So I am part of the water conservation group with Pete Mulvaney and I am thrilled to help in any way I can with the sustainability task force.
Thank you very much.
And then our, one of our, our volunteers who joined us is, uh, Joseph Mada. Want to just say hi?
Hello.
And Joseph, you're, you're working, I can't remember, you're working...
I'm actually, I like the two, the nominating.
Oh, you're the nominee. You're for here. Oh, you came for that. I thought you came for sustainability.
Well, I'm for that.
Okay. Yeah, my, yeah, my, my, uh, my wife is also on the village nominated committee, so she, anyway, that's another story. Um, okay. Next slide, please. Just really here, key point on this slide, we have, we've broken into seven working groups. We have seven teams, those focus areas, you know, I'll go through each one of them, but we have three to six members on each one of the teams. And what we did, we charged the teams with developing a plan and then they are responsible for the implementation of that plan. Since we've made that change, we've made a lot of progress in terms of getting people engaged and making progress on, in these various areas that were selected and focused. Um, one of the key things we did recently, it's noted in the, the bottom of that, was we conducted a community survey. Uh, John, next slide. And this survey, we conducted it, uh, oh, during January, February this year. We had 492 respondents to that survey. Um, now there's obviously a bit of self-selection because it was a sustainability survey, so we probably got a lot of people who were interested in sustainability to answer the survey, but we did get some answers that made it pretty clear that they were on a different, uh, had a different perspective on sustainability than we did. So we did get some cross-pollinization. In any event, you can see the, some of the things that really stand out are, where we've had some activities like the... had some activities like the, where we have most participation. We had some programs on energy-efficient lighting. We got 83% of the folks said they're participating in that. We had the Reduce Idling Initiative that the Board of Trustees passed a resolution declaring Glencoe to be a no-idling community, and we had, you know, 64% of people say they have now started, you know, not idling their car, which around the schools would be great. And the walk bike and role of school with getting people to use various alternative transportation, we had 62%. So we had a lot of, you know, positive things. We also learned a lot about where we're not being successful. Next slide, please. One of those would be in the carbon reduction area. You can see, we have a lot of priorities. One of the big ones was community solar. We put in a pretty good effort in terms of trying to get the word out on community solar. Hopefully, you all are familiar with what community solar is and community solar program. We had 13% people who said they were really aware of it. We had like 70% who didn't really know what it was all about, so we failed in terms of our communications effort there. So that's one of the objectives coming up this year, is to really revisit that and see how we can get the word out on that. It's a very easy way to go solar. Doesn't cost you anything, except saves you money, but we have, but it's a little complicated, so it's a bit of a harder sell. The other things, the no-idling, the EV, all those are there. Next slide, green lawns. Green lawns priority's been very, very busy this past year. The Leave the Leaves Program, again, as we saw from the survey, we had a fairly high adoption of that. The other thing was the Gas Powered Leaf Blower Initiative, that this committee did a tremendous amount of work on that, doing the research and coming up with a, really a program for how to approach phasing out gas-powered leaf blowers. We've talked, as Phil indicated, that's now been taken up by a multi-community task force, which is very gratifying. Next slide, trees and ravines. Oh, that was a, yep, okay. The trees and ravines, yeah, where, yeah, there we are, trees and ravines. This was, this was a task force, a team of one for this past year, and I was it. We now have two new members on that, so that we will be able to get some more focus on it. The focus this year was, we did a complete, a survey of the various tree ordinances for, from the various communities in the area, and made recommendations to the staff on how to best implement change to our tree ordinance, which I understand from the staff that we are now going through that as a part of the, I guess we got a grant from, can't remember who it was from, but we now have a mandate to go back and take a look at our tree ordinances. So hopefully that will provide some guidance to it. One of the things that came up in the survey was trees and the preservation of trees was one of the two highest priorities for the respondents to the, to the survey. So that's something we really need to spend more time on, so I'm glad we now have some more help. The next slide, recycling and waste reduction. Focus, I think, here really has to be on waste reduction. You know, recycling and keeping things out of the landfill is one thing, but really, the primary focus should be on waste reduction, and that will be one of the focuses going forward this year. Not to, you know, denigrate the efforts of the donate recycle effort. That has been a very successful program, and we are very happy to be continuing with that. Another problem that we've come up with in this area is, you know, we have containers, there's, you know, recycled landfill. And a lot of times, people just put waste in the recycle, and you can't, it contaminates it. You can't use it. We've been working with SWANQ. We had a meeting with them, I think, about two or three weeks ago, where we have a group that's going to come up. It's not a problem just for the village, it's a problem for the Park District, it's a problem for all other villages, it's a problem for the Chicago Botanic Garden. So this is an area I think we can put some focus in, in trying to develop a more comprehensive communication program to educate people as to what goes in what. And sometimes it's kind of complicated. You know, does that greasy pizza box go into recycle or waste? Well, actually, it goes into waste because it's grease, it's got grease on it. So those are things that we need to work on in that area. Let's see, what do we have?
As it was suggesting, we keep blasting people with that.
Oh, yeah.
You tell them once, it's got to be repeated.
Yeah, we had...
Maybe use the village's social media or village email. I work for a company, we've got it all over our office, but you still walk up and...
Right.
So I wouldn't be afraid to pull the communication.
No, that's, that, you know, and that's one of the, you know, Jennifer talked about the, our public awareness group. That is probably the most important group we have because it's all about getting people's attention and, you know, getting them to listen and hear the message.
Maybe people sign up for like a T blast or something.
Yeah.
That's one of the, that's one of the...
Well, I think one of the things we have now with the survey results, we have a lot of email addresses that we can reach out and start getting to people through that. And we had, in that, we had, like I said, 91 people volunteered, they said they wanted to be active in this area. So, and from that group, we've gotten 10 new commitments to work on one of these teams. So we're very, you know, we, we're making progress. It's slow, but we're making progress. I think the next slide is a photo of last year's donate recycle. And next is sustainable, the Sustainable Business, the next slide is Sustainable Businesses. Now, this is another area where we've been, we were kind of quiet on this year, we didn't do that much, but we asked some questions on the survey, and we got a lot of good feedback from what people want their merchants to do. So we're going to take that information and work with the Chamber of Commerce to develop some educational programs for our merchants and on particular restaurateurs. What can, what do people want in the way of, you know, disposables, you know, compostables, that type of stuff? So it, we have some things we can work with now and hopefully give them some incentive to, you know, this is what your community wants, this is what your customer base tells us they want. So hopefully, we can get that message across to them. And I think next is, I believe, public awareness, right? Nope, water use. Forgot about water use and protection. This one, I think our big opportunity here is the smart meter program. We've put those smart meters in, we're getting a lot of, we have access to a lot of information. We now need to start figuring out what can we do with, to help people understand what their water use patterns are to help reduce water consumption. So again, we have lots of opportunities there. And finally, public awareness. One of the things we did this year, we, back last spring, we had a contest for the Most Impeccable Bird. We decided we wanted to have a bird mascot to really talk, you know, use as a basis for talking about sustainability, talk about the fact that we're on a migratory pathway for birds, et cetera. And the, it turned out, I think, that the kids from South School stuffed the ballot box, and we ended up with Ruby, the Ruby-throated hummingbird. And as you can see, up in the very top-hand corner of the slide, one of our task force members, who is a very, she's pretty good with the, with the technology, Helen Latham, she developed this logo of a Ruby-throated hummingbird that we are now using as a logo throughout all of our publications. And yet, we're going to, we're trying to figure out some ways to make it a little more alive so when we do something like at a park, we can have a, you know, maybe a mascot or something that we can get people's attention, brings, draws in people, draws in kids, that type of thing. But that, so that's one of our efforts. The other is, I guess we're going to, this, either this summer or fall, have a sustainable social event. It's an opportunity to boost awareness and also to really recognize the work of the members and volunteers of the task force. So those are, but really, basically, public awareness is, as Jennifer said, a huge effort to get people's attention and get them, get the message across. And we've been using, like for the, for when we did the survey, we enlisted the help of the synagogue and places, you know, houses of faith to put something in their newsletter, and that was very successful. And I think that helped us boost the number of people we got on that. So we have a lot to do to increase that, but it's, again, messaging is critical. And finally, the, it was alluded to earlier, the Eco District Initiative. That's something we brought to the board last year. I'm happy to see that it's been, the spirit of the Eco Districts has been incorporated into the planning process, and we are very excited about the opportunity to engage in the comprehensive plan process with the Planning Commission, and look forward to figuring out how that engagement takes place, what we can do, what we can bring to the table. I had conversations with Bruce about a year ago on this, and we were talking about all the challenges it creates in terms of communication with the community. And at the end of the conversation, he said, now, you promised you're going to be there when we need you. And so after the meeting, after the, the whole, I caught Bruce and I said, well, you remember that you asked for a promise? I made the promise then, we'll be there for you. So we're very excited about being a part of that process. Now, the last thing, if I have no questions, that is to thank Jeff for all of his support, to thank the members and the volunteers for task force, and to thank you, the Board of Trustees, for your support over the past 12 months. We look forward to bringing you other initiatives, like the no-idling, like the gas leaf blower. We're going to keep bothering you with stuff, so keep supporting us. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher, and thank you for volunteering and your service to the village and to all of the people on your task force. We are very grateful for the great work that you're doing.
Okay.
That concludes the Village President's Report. The next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. There are, I think, 11 items, items A through K. They're, you know, they're published online and circulated. We've reviewed them, and unless there are any questions from the board, is there a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
Sumo?
Second.
I think we need a roll call for this. So Village Manager Corrali.
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney. Pete, are you there?
I'm sure he can hear us.
Hi, I'm here.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Trustee Underdunk.
Yes.
Trustee Ruben.
Yes.
Trustee Vrie.
Yes.
The motion carries. Okay. The next item on the agenda is regular business, and the first item of that is consideration of the resolution implementing appearance and design guidelines for outdoor dining structures and amending the village's comprehensive fee and fine schedule to establish fees for licensing agreements and carryout parking. And I will ask our Assistant Village Manager Sharon Tanner to present.
Thank you, President Roan, and good evening, members of the board. This evening's conversation follows a set of conversations that we've had over the last few months, most recently at March, the March 17th committee, the whole meeting to talk about the method by which we may move forward with outdoor dining structures and carryout parking spaces for downtown restaurants. And so at, following your conversation at the March meeting, we're back this evening to present recommendations for implementation. Next slide, please. So to quickly recap, back in March, the board had given us consensus that you would like to continue considering licensing agreements for dining structures for the next year, and then perhaps revisit a more longer-term program in 2023. You had asked us to develop a set of appearance and design guidelines that could be used for outdoor dining structures that may be placed in public rights of way. And last, you had asked us to develop a fee structure. Before diving into the appearance and design guidelines, I'll note that our recommendation for the fee structure is 50 cents per square foot per month for use of public right-of-way for dining structures. Actually, if you could go back one, please. Thank you. For carryout parking spaces, you had asked us to develop a structured program by which we could continue to provide carryout parking spaces in the downtown and also to develop these. Next slide, please. Okay. The appearance and design guidelines that we have before you this evening are largely the same as they were in March with some incremental modifications based on some feedback from some members of the restaurant community and a little bit deeper dive by staff. So I'll quickly summarize these. They are included in your packet. The use of crash barriers is recommended for, or to be considered for on-street spaces on a case-by-case basis based upon the specific use. We would work toward managing things like height or materials on a case-by-case basis, again, consistent with the use that's proposed. With regards to structure materials, we're continuing to recommend that structures be either rigid side materials like flexiglass or something similar, or durable soft material like sun umbrella or similar canvas or awning material or something along those lines, but no plastic or PVC. And that colors should be coordinated with existing awnings if there are, if there are awnings on the building, easy for me to say, or the village's downtown design guidelines. Similarly, with table umbrellas, we're recommending similar types of fabric, similar types of color coordination, and no signage on the umbrellas or lathering of any kind on the umbrellas. For signage, our recommendation continues to be that it be allowed only at the discretion of the village board when necessary due to lack of visibility of existing wall signage or of the applicant's business or an adjacent business. Next slide, please. Our recommendation for heating elements is that they must be commercial-grade appliances with either propane or electric power. Shrouds covering the propane tanks and heaters must have well-maintained cables, and we would work with individual applicants on a specific cord plan or storage plan as the case is appropriate based on their site. For lighting elements, we're recommending white lights only with no colored light bulbs, no multicolored lights. Not noted on the slide, but included in your packet is also a note that we would recommend that lights remain in a static-on position, so no blinking lights, no chase lights, things like that. Last, if a raised platform is used, we, our recommendation is that it may be allowed at the request of the business, that it may be raised to elevate the seating area to curb height, and we would work with the restaurant to develop specifications on a case-by-case basis based upon their site that's proposed. Next slide, please. Before we move into temporary carryout parking spaces, I'll reiterate our recommendation for the fee for dining structures is 50 cents per square foot per month. On the temporary carryout parking spaces, we're recommending that restaurants be allowed to request up to a maximum of three spaces per restaurant and no more than 15 spaces in the aggregate to be distributed in the downtown. What we envision is that restaurants that request three, we may hold off on providing all three until we've gotten requests from other restaurants within a reasonable timeframe so that we can be sure that we can allocate those 15 spaces across our restaurants that may be interested in using them. For fees, this is a little bit of a change from what we had proposed back in March, or what we suppo, excuse me, supposed back in March, based on a little bit deeper dive that we did to think about how spaces might be used, how pickup operations might be conducted, and how we can best encourage judicious use of spaces by restaurants so that they're not requesting more spaces than they perhaps may need. Our recommendation is continuing to be no charge for the first space, and what we've done differently in this recommendation compared to what you saw last month is we separated out pickup times into distinct breakfast, lunch, and dinner pickup times. I do apologize, I just noticed a typo on my slide for, for the fee structure. So perhaps, Jen, we can just go back a slide, that way we don't hold this slide up rather than having correct information on there, and I do apologize for that. Our recommendation is that the fee for the breakfast seating is $25, or, excuse me, breakfast pickup is $25, $50 for the lunch pickup, and $25 for the dinner pickup.
Seventy-five for lunch.
Seventy-five, thank you, so sorry. Seventy-five dollars for the lunch, recognizing that the midday hours are typically the busiest in the downtown, and so we would like to really encourage judicious use of spaces in that timeframe. I'll pause to ask if there are any questions that a board member may have about these recommendations.
I have one. I have one. What, so let's take, I don't want to, you know, pick on them, but let's take Guild Hall because they're there and they've got a structure. What is 50 cents per square foot per month for Guild Hall likely to look like? What's that, what's that?
It's probably going to be in the neighborhood of $500 or so. We would want to take a precise measurement, but that's a safe ballpark estimate.
Five to 600 a month.
Okay.
Fifteen in the aggregate?
Yes.
So for all of Glencoe, we'd have a 15 space in the area?
Correct.
How do people apply? So there's, let's say that there's 20 restaurants. How many, what five are left out?
Great question. What we've done is created an application form that we would distribute to the restaurants, ask them to turn it back to us by a certain date for this initial pass at them, and then see what the response is. We do know from some of our initial conversations with the restaurants that some are interested in it, perhaps similar to their using it now in terms of number of spaces, and some restaurants are not interested in it. But we certainly will make it available to everyone.
For example, if somebody applied for three, would everybody get one for, does somebody get your second?
That would be our intent, is that we would try to distribute them in that way.
Yes, no, absolutely.
For the parking, is that exclusive, new parking for type one?
It would be signed as they are currently as carryout parking.
Could somebody park there for a different establishment?
There, there's probably not a great way to enforce that.
Let's just, uh, put it how close you. I had another one, I didn't quite understand the chart. Were there zeros for parking fees and looking at the number of spaces, zero for the first space?
Correct. Uh, no, that is, that is what we're recommending, is that for the first space, there is, sure. We would like to be able to provide that to the restaurants for some of the reasons that we noted last month, which are, we believe that, excuse me, we believe that by providing carryout parking spaces for the restaurants that are interested in having them, that it can help manage traffic efficiently in the downtown, customer behavior has adapted to those, and so we would like to continue to provide them. It is also something that we can provide to, to the restaurants in support of economic development, also recognizing too that our restaurants are paying a places for eating tax, and so it's something that we may be able to provide for them. The additional spaces, if they were to get a second and a third space, or just a second space perhaps, then they would pay a fee per space. And they would pay kind of on an à la carte approach. So for example, if a restaurant only wanted a dinner, dinnertime pickup space, and they wanted to have two spaces, their fee would be $25 total per month because they would get the first space at no cost and the second space would cost $25. If they wanted to have a space for, two spaces for lunch and dinner pickup, their fee would be $100 per month because the first space would be at no, no cost, and the second space would be $75 for lunchtime and $25 for dinnertime.
I'd only add to Sharon's excellent explanation there that we also talked about it from the standpoint of the village's past practice on amending some of our parking rules in the downtown at the express request of individual businesses in the past. For instance, all of the 15-minute spaces were added over time by individual businesses. There are a few five-minute pickup spaces that were added at requests of individual businesses over time. And so it, by, by providing that first one at no cost, and admittedly, to your point, Trustee Underdunk, others could potentially park there. We don't, we don't hyper-police it, but that is something that is always possible. They're not, you know, they're, it doesn't say parking or curbside pickup only for X restaurant, but I think they're usually proximate to those restaurants, but they would be open to others potentially as well.
That's known as a free rider problem.
Thank you for bringing that to my attention. That is the approach by a couple of citizens that they were concerned about, the appearance of, what they call it, a land grab of public spaces for private gain. But now I'm seeing that since anybody can park there, build where they want for their temporary parking, I see a public benefit of that.
Sharon, okay. Anybody else want to talk about the first part of Sharon's presentation? Okay.
Um, these.
Up, Pete.
Yes, sorry. These are, these are pretty modest costs and therefore pretty modest revenues, but I wonder if we could or should earmark these revenues for non-restaurant business activity, make some kind of a fund out of these revenues that go back to the downtown area to promote business, any other businesses. Just an idea, that's all I had to say.
That's a really great comment, Trustee Mulvaney, and it's something the staff has been talking about, particularly from the standpoint of overall appearance enhancements in the downtown, opportunities for appropriate seasonal plantings, opportunities for upgrades to some of our streetscape materials, benches and trash cans and the like. So we are, we are looking at that, and it's something we'll come back to you guys with in our budget process this fall.
Okay, now Sharon.
So those are our recommendations for you this evening. If you have any other questions, we'd certainly be happy to answer them, or if you would like to move forward, or if you'd like us to take another pass at this, at this point, we would appreciate your direction.
Thank you for the clear presentation. In the prior meeting, it was clear that there are sort of divergent views on the, the dining structures. I, some of us on the board think one way, some think the other, and we all agreed that we, at a minimum, ought to be doing this for the next year because there's still a And I'm, I'm comfortable with your proposals. And, and so is there a resolution, is there a motion to approve a resolution as Assistant Village Manager Tanner presented with the fee structures that she said, but that are not typed?
They are, they are correct in your packet, and I apologize.
They're, they're correct in the packet. Everything that's in the packet was accurate.
That's all correct.
It was just the power.
I grabbed an incorrect version on the screen, I do apologize.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution as set forth in the packet for the next year?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Let's have a roll call, please.
Oh, boy. Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes.
Trustee Underdunk.
Yes.
Trustee Rubin.
Yes.
Trustee Vrie.
Yes.
The motion carries, thank you, but don't sit down.
I sure won't.
The next, the next item on the agenda is consideration of a resolution authorizing the Second Amendment to the licensing agreement with Guild Hall Restaurant for use of public right-of-way for outdoor dining.
All right, and thank you once again, if you'd like to go to the next slide. This evening, we have a request from Guild Hall Restaurant to amend their licensing agreement that's currently in place through the end of this month. So I'd like to quickly summarize the changes that would be made if approved by the village board to the existing licensing agreement. First, the duration would be modified to May 1st, 2022 to April 30th of 2023, so it would be for a full one-year period. Excuse me. The structures that are in place would provide for the 12 greenhouses to be replaced with an outdoor dining structure that's similar to what we had just discussed in the context of appearance and design guidelines. It would be constructed of a metal frame and durable soft material with a, and we'll show some examples in a brief moment. The intent is that Guild Hall would have some time during the term of this agreement to decommission the greenhouses and install their new structure. There is a bit of lead time that's required, so we didn't want that to be an immediate change that was required under the licensing agreement. It is intended to be in the coming period of time. Fees would be paid by Guild Hall per the fee schedule, which the board has just amended in your last action. And then their site plan in the existing agreement would be replaced with a new site plan for the new arrangement, which would include a smaller footprint on the parking space area, only that they currently are using rather than also sidewalk area that they're using. If you'd like to go to the next slide, please. To refresh the board's memory from last month's presentation or from members of the public who may be, may be viewing this as well, this is Guild Hall's conceptual site plan. As noted, it covers the sidewalk air, or excuse me, the on-street area that their dining area currently includes, but does not include the sidewalk area that it currently has today. Next slide, please. These are renderings of the dining structure. Next slide, please. And with a different angle, and with some color added to it, and again, a different angle showing the side of the structure as well. Next slide, please. This is a photo of an example of a similar type of structure, not necessarily the design Guild Hall might utilize, but to, to give a live example of a similar type of structure constructed of similar materials. This is in New York City. Obviously, this is not downtown Glencoe in the photo, so this is, this is meant merely as an illustrative example. And again, a similar type of structure used by a restaurant out of town. There is a representative from Guild Hall here this evening. If you have any questions, I'm also happy to answer any questions regarding the amendments to the licensing agreement.
Are there any questions about the licensing agreement? And for the benefit of the public, we have talked about this idea before. Anybody have any further questions now? Trustee Underdunk?
I'd like to understand a little more about the dining structure itself. Certainly, I think it's, it's a boon to the downtown, definitely supports the downtown and our other theater and other businesses. It provides a third place for people to, to meet, the idea that it's a place to gather. And in some ways, it's almost a COVID refuge, I guess. My concerns that I have about the design, it's pretty sketchy at this point. At this point, maybe our applicant can help us understand a little more about it. I just don't, I guess I just don't quite get it. Is that be possible?
Sure, they're, they're here. Let me just say, you know, one thing you mentioned was a COVID refuge.
Yeah.
To the extent that it's open on the sides, yes, but it's not, you know, that right now, they have these individual greenhouses, so you can pick the folks that you're with and that's it. This is going to be a bigger structure, so if, if the sides were closed, it's not necessarily a COVID refuge.
Okay. Okay.
Because it's, it's not.
I think it'd probably be more leaky than the other one, but okay, I'll go with you on that. But I'd like to understand a little more from a design perspective, what's being proposed? The, the pictures are pretty, pretty sketchy, I guess. Would you pick up on that? Let's go back to what I call the New York City example. Can we do that? Yeah. Is that what you're thinking of?
Sure. Jeff Shayback, on behalf of ownership of Guild Hall, can we actually go back to the green slide first, maybe two back? One more. Okay, sorry, the, the green slide, two to the right. Perfect. That's the existing crash wall that was built, the concrete crash wall for safety and security on Vernon. So the greenhouses are obviously missing from this rendering. The green fabric is like a sun umbrella fabric wrapped around a metal structure that's built inside of that, you know, inside, which you can't really see, is metal that is wrapped with the sun umbrella fabric. Those are open areas, they can also be closed with a clear material, so for a rainstorm, you'd be able to enclose it, but otherwise, the intention is certainly in the summertime would be to have that open. Could you go to the photos of Balthazar in New York? So here's an example of an actual structure that's been up as a streetery in Soho and Manhattan at a restaurant called Balthazar. If we can go to the other side, the next photo, please. So now you're seeing it with the clear material and the red vinyl material, sorry, red sun umbrella-like fabric material. And they're showing theirs is closed in this image, they have a crash wall in front as well, theirs is clearly much larger, it's half a city block in Soho and Manhattan. But that, that is basically a very similar design as to what we're proposing. If we could go back one image, please? You'll see that you enter from the side, facing the sidewalk as opposed to the public right-of-way street. You're entering into the space and you have tables and chairs for outdoor dining. They have planters as well, our planters have been in place this entire time, sitting on top of the concrete crash wall.
Are you intending to have planters as well?
We already have planters, the existing planters that we installed on top.
You're going to recycle them or reuse on the gap?
Well, we were not, we weren't intending to take them back.
Maintain them, right.
Continue to maintain them.
Right.
Now, tell me about the seating, if you can. Is the number of seats in this proposed tent structure more or less than the clear cubicles?
The greenhouses existing?
The greenhouses, yeah.
Sure. Can we go back maybe five or six, please? So we didn't, I guess the answer is you can fit up to six people per greenhouse, times 12 would be 72 total people in the greenhouses. I believe we're showing around 66 here, but it was just merely to be able to show Phil and, and Village of Glencoe staff what we were thinking. We didn't, we didn't actually take the time to, you know, specify the actual table, but this was giving a rough idea of how many people could comfortably sit under the tent. You technically could fit another table in the southwest corner of the structure. You'll also note that what was previously greenhouses on both the public right-of-way parking spaces and public right-of-way sidewalk are no longer on the sidewalk. We had to do that in order to have a way to exit all of the greenhouses down the center because there was no other way out of the greenhouses, and that would be eliminated in this structure.
And this approach would be fully ADA accessible under the ordinances, the persons with disabilities?
Well, yeah, I mean, technically, you're at the same height as the sidewalk already, that's how we built our platform, such that you'd be able to get to a table.
Okay. Okay. And then, of course, the color would be reviewed by staff, is that correct?
Correct. That would be the intention. As, as the design guidelines articulate, they would, are, the color would be intended to be complementary to existing awning materials that have been approved already, and then also in compliance with the village's downtown appearance guidelines, the color, the color spectrum.
Okay. Okay, that's all my questions.
Any other questions for either Guild Hall or Sharon? If not, is there a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the Second Amendment to the licensing agreement?
Some of.
Is there a second?
Second.
Let's have a roll call.
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes.
Trustee Underdunk.
Yes.
Trustee Rubin.
Yes.
Trustee Vrie.
Yes.
The motion carries, and thank you, Assistant Village Manager Tanner. All right, the next item on the agenda is consideration of an ordinance amending Section 4-6 of the Village Code related to liquor license classifications. And I'll ask the Assistant Village Manager, John Pape, to present. Welcome, Mr. Pape. This is your first and I'm sure will not be your last presentation to us. Don't blow it.
Thank you, Mr. President, Board of Trustees, appreciate it. I'll try to be brief, I know it's the end of your evening, so before you this evening, our recommendations for amendments to the liquor code, they're in anticipation of some requests that, that staff anticipates coming through, and they're meant to be just incremental changes intended to improve the process. As you can see, they can really be broken down into two categories. The first one, that Class B3 license is currently only allowed for municipal operated golf courses. The request that we anticipate is the Glencoe Park District to hold a year-round license. Currently, they are not eligible for the year-round license under B3, and so they have to apply for, you know, multiple special event licenses throughout the year, excuse me, multiple special event licenses throughout the year to obtain. the year, excuse me, multiple special event licenses throughout the year, uh, to obtain for, for each event. Um, this change would amend B three to include all recreational facilities owned or operated by a governmental entity, so that they could, uh, hold a license and address that by, um, by being allowed to serve at each event that they have, similar to how the golf course does. Uh, the amendment to Class B three retains all the same requirements for responsible service and Basset training. The second item, um, is a request for special event organizers, such as the Glencoe Festival of Arts and the Farmers Market. Uh, historically, those two events were sponsored by the, uh, um, Glencoe Chamber of Commerce. Since the Glencoe Chamber of Commerce has merged with Wineeka and Norton Field, uh, they are now for-profit entities that are the real, uh, holding licensees, uh, for these events. Under Class E special events, they're currently only eligible for non-for-profit, uh, you know, in the code, it talks about civic organizations, educational, things like that, so these for-profit, uh, event holders would not be eligible. This small amendment would add E two, so E one stays as all those nonprofits, E two allows for all other applicants who hold a special event permit, uh, making these other, um, uh, events eligible. The amendments otherwise, uh, stay the same. E one is the only category that would retain, uh, basically an exemption from the responsible service, Basset training. All other licensed classes, uh, would hold the same. Under E one, it would be the same as what Class E is currently, which allows for one supervisor to have that training and oversee, be on-site at all times, uh, other volunteers, that's done in place the recognition that most of these are nonprofit events that rely on volunteers to make these services possible. Um, as with, uh, all aspects of the village's liquor code, the liquor commissioner retains control to how and if any licenses are approved and issued, and has the ability to request an additional meeting or information if needed to make a decision. Uh, in your packet this evening, of course, is the full red line, as well as, uh, the changes to the fee and fine schedule that'll be required to make these amendments possible. Um, the E two licenses would be fifty dollars per day, just like the current E license is. Um, both these recommendations were formulated by and in consultation with village's legal counsel, and, uh, you know, are prepared for you this evening, so I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Thanks, sir, excellent.
I didn't blow it, huh?
You didn't blow it. Uh, anybody have any questions for Mr. Pape? All this seems sensible?
I have my, uh, opportunity for a question. Um, under the E one, which I understand is the for-profit, um, use?
E one would be the nonprofit use, so all the categories currently under Class E would become E one.
For the for-profit user, there is a, a fee for that to cover some of the village expenses, is that correct?
Correct, it's a fifty dollar per day fee.
Do you think that that, well, let's see, do we think that that is sufficient to cover our costs? Do we get a food tax on top of that?
We would, yes, and it, it, we, we, we would say that it is sufficient to cover our costs, those are relatively straightforward, uh, for a, for a single event like that. And again, it's, it is as part of a special event permit as well, so you have to have one to have the other.
Is, is there a fee for the special event permit to?
There can be, depending upon whether it's a not-for-profit organization or not, but...
Yeah, well, I was thinking if it were for-profit, for instance, we may, say we have a rock concert, okay? Um, uh, that we may want to figure out a way to ha- um, provide for extra security or something like that.
That would be, that would be separately handled, yeah, that would be, we could, we, and we do, um, for certain events, uh, I'll use the example of the art festival. Um, there are, in that case, they provide all of their own site security, but when we were doing the, um, Glencoe Grand Prix, for instance, all of the s- the time for, that Public Works, uh, would spend setting up, and all the time that public safety would spend, uh, managing the event during the course of the event was back billed to the, um, uh, special event provider.
Or if there's third-party, if there's additional legal fees, all that gets charged as well, any third party.
We have the authority to do that.
We have that ability to pass through, and then that's based, done on an individual basis.
Correct, correct.
What did we do with the big concert last Labor Day?
That, that liquor li- that liquor service was handled under the, uh, uh, the, um, auspices of the liquor license holder, which was the restaurant at the time, which they are...
Creative approach.
That, that our legal counsel has structured very, very effectively.
So is it safe to say that before this, the only way to go on these temporary liquor licenses was something creative via a restaurant or to be a nonprofit?
Correct.
We're effectively giving, if somebody wants to put some, an event on, you know, the, the, the Grand Prix post-party without the Grand Prix?
Correct.
Now they have a, an opportunity to...
And, and, and to give a real, to give a real-life example, this is related to the Art Festival for the twenty-twenty-two, who is trying to work with, uh, one of our, or multiple of our restaurants to actually provide both food and beverage service for that event, so this would provide them the opportunity to do that.
You're bringing Glencoe in line with best practices.
Yeah.
Any, any other questions? If not, is there a motion, uh, to, um, approve the amendment to the, the ordinance amending Section four dash six of the Village Code related to liquor license classifications?
So moved.
Second, please.
Second?
Let's have a roll call.
Trustee Hallwax?
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney?
Yes.
Trustee Underdonk?
Yes.
Trustee Rubin?
Yes.
Trustee Vrie?
Yes.
The motion carries, thank you for an excellent presentation.
Thank you.
Um, we do not have a closed session, um, unless there's anything else from the board, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Do we need a roll call?
No, let's, let's, let's vote.
All in favor, thank you. Anybody who want to stay? The motion carries, thank you, everybody.
Good night, everyone. Thanks, Pete.